Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our May 8, 2019 Planning Board Meeting. Barbara, would you please take the role?
Chairman Curry.
Here.
Mr. Zaberrito.
Present.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Goldenberg.
Present.
Ms. Torbina.
Here.
Mr. Maximare.
Here.
And Ms. Danan.
Here.
Thank you. First on our agenda is a time extension for Xena Stevenson Subdivision. It's a request for their seventh 90-day time extension. We're in receipt of two letters, one from the Town Planner and one from Bibbo Associates. I believe, Saret, you don't have any problem granting this extension?
No doubt.
Any Board member comments?
I would just want to remind everybody historically that this property contains the barn that housed the original elephant from 1815.
Hmm.
Is it still there?
Well, it was bought in 1808. I think its demise happened in 1815. It's just, I just mean how historic this property is.
Yeah.
And the barn still exists.
And for the record, this is their seventh 90-day extension is for the conditional final subdivision approval and stormwater management and erosion sediment control permit. And the dates are from June 11, 2019, up to and including September 9, 2019, in accordance with 150-13 AM of the Code of the Town of Somers. The property is located at the corner of Route 100 and Route 138, and it's in an R-80 zoning district. I'll make a motion. We grant this extension?
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Do we have any, do we know why it's taking almost two years to, they have almost two years of extensions?
I can't remember. I think Tim did tell us, because that question came up before, and I'm sorry, it escapes my memory.
No, we'll look, and I do recall that there was something in what he submitted. So let's see what he says.
Surveyor?
Mrs. Stevenson has hired a surveyor for the final plat, and they'll proceed with filing as soon as the plat is finished and signed by the Health Department.
So I guess they're waiting for the Health Department. Does that make sense, Saret?
Well, there was a change in surveyor, wasn't there?
Yes, there's a change in surveyor.
Oh, that's right. Didn't the surveyor die? That's right. The original, now it's coming back. The original surveyor died. They had to hire a new one, blah, blah, blah. Okay. Okay. I think I made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is a discussion on the North County homes at Cardinal Way. Do you want to say anything?
I'm here for the final resolution. I'm trying to get your mic on Jack's audio.
Okay. Just go, I'm sorry, just go to my, just so, you know, Joe Barber-Gallo texted me. He's a little late, and he said if the board is so inclined, he has no problem with the few remaining items to us, this direct staff to do a resolution, but first, we're going to have to do a neg deck. Is that not correct?
Which is not prepared.
Yeah. Which is not prepared. Okay, so what we can do is do the neg deck, and you could have the resolution ready at the next meeting. Is that fair?
I have not analyzed, I prepared the neg deck, so I would suggest...
No, but I'm saying we can do the next, the neg deck at the next meeting.
The neg deck and the resolution.
At the next meeting, right.
But there's a, you know, a few items.
But there's a few items to be cleaned up. They may be cleaned up by then, but according to Joe, they're minor, and he doesn't have a problem. Board member comments?
No, I have a comment, I have a question.
Sure.
You want to go?
No.
It has to do with the trees. What is it, a total of 34 trees?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven trees?
Thirty-seven trees.
Yeah, that was the total on between the two lots. When is it okay for the trees to come down?
Time of the year? Is that what you're asking?
Well, it's not mentioned in any of the...
You know something? It's interesting, we don't have that in there.
I don't see it anywhere in any of the papers. I don't mean it should be there, but it's just something natural for me to ask because...
When I go to the neg deck, Nancy?
Yeah.
I have not looked carefully to see where the EA, what the EAF says about that.
Isn't that only, isn't that only when there's been evidence of that inhibition?
Yes, and that's why I say I have to look at the EAF, and that comes out when I do the neg deck, and I have not done the neg deck, so...
Oh, okay. I'm not pushing to save the best. I was just concerned when it applies and when it doesn't apply.
Only when there is, when you do the environmental assessment form.
Yes.
And the environmental mapper, which is on the SEACR site, New York State DEC site, comes up with an item that identifies that there are potential.
Okay.
For rare and endangered species.
Okay, so they do it. It comes under that reg...
It comes up from, that is the one thing that always, if it is subject to that, comes up from DEC on the environmental mapper.
On the mapper.
And then we have to check out exactly what it is, and typically, in this area, it's been the northern-eared bats.
Yeah, right. I know the background. I was just curious broadly, I don't want to impede their progress.
Yeah, there's a period, like March to October. I don't remember the exact date.
Right, right. Yeah, March 31, I think, is the cutoff date.
Because that's what, on the project over on Route 6, that was that they had to clear those trees in that timeframe.
I had another reason for asking, just casually, because of the time of year. It doesn't impact the normal homeowner, does it? I call my favorite tree person, because I've decided I want a couple of trees done.
No, 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 not at all. No, those are not, because those are not subject to SEACR.
Oh, good. I didn't want to feel guilty.
On the subject of trees, that your site plan for the tree removal was unclear as to whether certain species would be removed and then replanted. So one of our committees in the town has asked for clarification, and if you can't clarify, it's understandable at this point. We would, they recommended that if you do plant any replacement trees for the ones that you cut, that they be native to the area and not something imported from, let's say, another country or from another part of the United States. They would like to keep the indigenous species native to the area. Thank you.
And Saret, help me with, about waiving of the public hearing. That's for the...
You want, they, in this case, you actually have no discretion, because we're, the section of the subdivision law that allows or does not allow or requires a final, a public hearing for the final subdivision approval, if it is less than six months from the approval of the preliminary, the code says there shall be...
Shall.
No public hearing.
Okay.
It doesn't say may. It says shall.
This is not discretion.
Okay, okay.
So there's not going to be a public hearing.
Okay.
So we don't have to set one for the next meeting. There are a couple of things that, you know, Jack got my memo. He should know what to do, and, you know, he's got to fix up the zoning table, and the one thing I do want the board to take a look at is a lot of those conifers, if they are, are along the boundary line that are going to be removed. A large portion of that boundary line is actually between the property and the applicant's own property, but some of them are between the property and the neighbor's property. So the board should determine whether or not this applicant needs to replace some of those between the proposed development and the neighboring property. So that's something I think you should make a decision.
Have you thought about that? Do you have any plans?
I think one's by my neighbors. I believe they're going to end up staying, maybe some along my own property line are going to be removed.
Okay.
But actually, when the property line comes up and joins my neighbors...
It's not the case when you look at the plan.
Okay, yeah, that, well, I'll look at it, and if we can leave them, we'll leave them anyway.
But if you don't leave them, is the question.
That's fine, then we'll, then we'll replace them.
Okay. Then we will put that in the resolution.
Right.
With a native future tree.
Well, yeah, I'm assuming you'd want to replace the conifers with the same conifer. Yeah.
Well, also, Joe's memo is expressly saying at 4F, it's talking about existing trees, and it says applicants provide a survey of existing site which shows existing tree locations. Applicants shall clearly identify which trees are to be protected during construction. So I would think that protecting trees during construction would include trees on the boundary of the property, because it's all part of the site which is being constructed. So the applicant has no choice but to, in order to comply with the memo, to do that as well.
Well, we have to add that to the resolution.
But I mean, but it is, it's identified as well with absolute direction from the engineer who's not here.
And normally, they flag the trees that are being preserved.
Any other board member comments? Joe, do you have any comments? Saret?
Nope.
So at the next meeting, we'll have two things prepared. Fair enough?
Motion to approve the neg deck?
We need to, we need to have it.
Well, we need to have it in our hands.
We need to have the neg deck in order to move the resolution.
Okay. Motion to...
Motion to repair.
To prepare the...
There we go.
And can we, are we jumping the gun if we ask you to prepare the resolution now, too? Even though we don't have an egg deck?
No, I'll prepare both for the shooting.
Okay, so then, we'll make that motion, too, okay? Is there a second on those two motions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. See you. See you in June. If you want to just give a brief overview or something, because we're going to basically wait board discussion and stuff until Joe comes, but... For the record, this is Heritage Hills Society, an application for wetland and water course protection permit for the repair of open bottom arc culvert and related drainage improvements.
So, good evening. My name is Rich Williams. I'm with Insight Engineering. Also here with me is John Milligan of Heritage Management. And before I talk about our project, I just want to go through the various heritage entities that exist and who's actually the applicant on this, just for clarity. Heritage Society is the overall HOA Association for the Heritage Hills Development. Each condo within Heritage Hills also has their own HOA. Separate from Heritage Hills, there is also Heritage Management. That is a private company. Mr. John Milligan of Heritage Management is here with me this evening. They are the property managers that oversee, you know, the management and maintenance of the Heritage Hills Development. Separate from all of those entities is the Heritage Hills Water and Sewer Corp. And I just want to make that distinction. We are not the Water Sewer Corp. The applicant for this is Heritage Hills Society, which is the overall HOA for Heritage Hills.
Okay, so at this point, I need to disclose, I'm a resident of Heritage Hills. As such, I'm a member of the society, and I pay dues to the Sewage Corporation. I, my condo is not proximate to the site, so I don't perceive myself as having a conflict with the instant application.
I guess it's my turn to, I must, I have to recuse myself, because I'm on both, I'm Vice President of the Society Board, and I've also stormwater treatment, stormwater management, head of the Stormwater Management Committee, and I know a lot about this project, and I've been involved in the planning of it, so I have to recuse myself.
So, let's, let's start with where the project is, because that's something I know Joe was familiar with.
Right, it's fine.
And it'll buy us a little bit of time. What I have up right now is an aerial map of the vicinity of the Heritage Hills Development. Down here, we have the Somers Hamlet. You can see 10202. This is the IBM property. Here you have the existing Somers Town Center. This aerial is prior to the construction of the Chico's, which is now located right here. You have Heritage Hills Drive. This is the pond Imperial Walk sits on. Here you have the sewer treatment plant. Just north, you have the main recreation facility for Heritage Hills. Just south of that main recreation facility is the intersection of Heritage Hills Drive, which runs north and south, and West Hill Drive, which runs to the west. We are just in from the intersection of Heritage Hills Drive on West Hill Drive, and...
Could you tilt it just a little bit like that, so I can follow better as you point? Thank you, Rich. Thank you.
Okay, so, so this is an enlargement of the intersection. Here you have Heritage Hills Drive. You have the curb lines for West Hill Drive, which runs to the west. North is generally up on this drawing. And just to the west of Heritage Hill Drive, there is a pond. The outlet structure to that pond is a concrete wall that has a spillway. Water flows over the spillway into a natural stream bed, which is then conveyed under West Hill Drive via an existing culvert with the inlet here and the outlet here, where it then continues down in the stream. The culvert's construction, it's a CMP arch culvert, which means there's concrete footings that stick about a foot above the natural stream bed, and then over that, there is a corrugated metal arch. The way that arch is constructed is with bolted panels. So if I go from the left footing to the right footing, there's generally five panels, two on the left side of the arch, a center panel, two on the right side of the arch, and they're all bolted together. And that's done throughout the length of the culvert with overlapping panels.
Did you say it was corrugated?
It is corrugated metal. Okay. As part of ongoing maintenance and, you know, preservation of infrastructure, it was noted that there was deterioration and disintegration of a section on the inlet side of the CMP arch culvert. Part of the corrugated metal actually broke away. On the other side, also on the inlet, but on the western side, you can see the corrugated metal pushing in or rolling due to the soil loads behind it. So this is a condition that needs to get repaired. We reached out to Contech, who is the manufacturer of the culvert. We had their experts come out, and they recommended replacing nine of the panels on the inlet side. So on this plan, you can see the, the water, highlighted in blue. The culvert itself is yellow, and the nine panels we need to replace are in orange. The way we'll do that is we'll set an excavator along West Hill Drive, out of the road, but over into the side of the culvert. We'll remove the soil over the culvert, replace the nine panels, and then we're going to end up reinforcing and, and restabilizing the inlet of this culvert. Part of what led to the deterioration is the drainage on West Hill Drive has two curb cuts. It all flows to this portion of West Hill Drive, where the stormwater then comes through the curb cuts and flows overland into the stream. The way it was designed, it came right in alongside this edge of culvert and has been leading to chronic erosion. So we are going to create a swell that diverts the water away from the culvert and farther uphill. This will offer a little bit more pretreatment than currently exists. We're also going to restabilize these slopes with rip rap, so that they don't continue to erode. On the very inlet side of the culvert, you can see the stream flow via the blue arrow. We go from the top of the page to the bottom of the page. You can see this culvert isn't directly in line with the stream flow, so we're also going to use three-foot boulders right at this corner here to help armor that angle, so that the water doesn't beat against the side of the culvert, but instead funnels into the culvert better, and also to help minimize future erosion. In order to accommodate this, we don't want to work in a natural stream bed. So what we're going to do is we're going to come back to the spillway I mentioned earlier. We're going to sandbag the spillway. Now, we don't want to just sandbag the spillway and let the water build up in the pond. So what we're going to do is, inside that sandbag berm, we're going to put a 24-inch pipe. That pipe is then going to run from that spillway straight through our work zone and into the existing culvert. That way, the normal stream flow can continue and can leave our work zone dry. We're also going to have a small dewatering pump. It's not realistic to assume that there isn't going to be any seepage or wet area within the stream bed, so we're going to keep a dewatering pump here, just to keep the work zone dry for people. And then we're going to pump that through the culvert and on the downstream side into what's called a dirt bag. It's an awkward name, but it's a proprietary name. And we use these a lot on golf courses when we're doing dredging of irrigation ponds. And basically, it is a big bag that fills up, and the bag has very small openings, so it traps all the sediment inside, but still lets the water out. Bags require maintenance. They have to be replaced when there's certain, you know, they get full to a certain amount. We'll detail all that on the drawings. It's one of Joe's comments. But that's how we're going to keep our work area dry. As far as equipment within the stream bed, there isn't going to be any. We're going to site an excavator again uphill of the culvert and on dry ground. The only people going into the stream bed are going to be the workers who are going to need to unbolt and re-bolt in the new panels. So that allows us to be proactive in the event of rain. Because I mentioned before, we have these concrete footings that are one foot tall. If, for whatever instance, we're going to have a large rainfall event, we can always remove the sandbags, let the water flow down the course as it always would. Again, us removing those panels isn't going to affect the stream flow because of the concrete footing still funneling the water. So we do have that contingency in place if it comes up. However, our work period is anticipated to only be two weeks. That is essentially the project.
What percentage of the, of the culverts are you replacing?
Just by eyeball.
I guess my next question is, is there a time frame on these? I mean, why wouldn't you replace all of them now?
To replace all of the panels now. So the culvert comes from here to here. We're only replacing this zone in orange. We're going to be working completely outside of the road area. We may have some temporary staging of trucks, you know, making deliveries of gravel or rip rap on the roadway during construction. If, you know, for those of you familiar with Heritage, you'll know there's always maintenance going on, and throughout the community, truck traffic is not, you know, it's pretty routine there. It's not out of the normal. We don't expect to actually be shutting down lanes for long periods of time. It's, it's really temporary impacts, just for loading and unloading materials. But the reason we're not replacing the whole culvert right now is that is a whole nother cost and scope. You'd actually have to remove the road, remove the curbs, excavate out all this material.
Tearing up, tearing up roads.
We'd have to do it, we'd probably have to come up with a logistics plan that allowed us to do it in lanes, so we can keep one lane open.
Have, have a road at a time.
And you're taking, you know, you're exponentially increasing the project cost.
I was just, is it a matter, is it just a matter of time before they go, too? Or not necessarily?
Everything has a life cycle. At this point in time, there is still life left in the remainder of the culvert.
Okay.
Based on what inspection has told you that? Did you use a camera or?
The culvert is eight feet tall.
Okay.
So it was, it was visual.
Yes, question.
I'm sorry. Can I have something?
Question. I have a question. I took notes as you talk. You said more pretreatment than, than currently exists.
I think he means the water's going to get put back up further north, so it's going to be treated more than it's being treated.
Well, when you talk about pretreatment, you are collecting debris, right? Particles?
Road salt, sands.
Right. Than currently exists. So what currently exists is going where? Into the wetlands?
Directly, so right now, from these curb cuts, we have ongoing erosion.
Right, you have erosion.
So...
And so if you have erosion, that erosion gets further forced down that stream bed into the wetlands?
The silt.
Yep.
Otherwise, no, the silt, thank you. Does this impact the sewer plant?
I'm not sure how you make the connection. I mean, the sewer plant discharges into a stream. I'm not sure if it's in the stream.
No, I know about where the sewer plant discharges. I didn't mean that. But the sewer plant is next to a wetland.
Yep.
And so this is feeding into that wetland, right?
Yeah, the, the volume of water we're talking about from the road and the amount of soil loss, I mean, you're talking about a strip that's maybe 10 feet long, four feet wide, yay deep, it's not enough to actually cause downstream, large-scale flooding.
No, no, I didn't mean it that way. What I'm thinking is what you are doing is a benefit to the wetlands.
Yes.
Right? Therefore, it's a benefit to the town, right?
We think so.
I should have come that way.
Yes.
Really what I'm going on.
Yep.
And I just wanted to make sure I'm correcting this.
I have a question about the pump that you plan to use.
Mm-hmm.
Will this be only operating during your construction phase, meaning the time that you have workers in there, or is it potential that this could be running 24 hours to keep it dry?
Good question. No, it'll only be working when we're onsite working.
So once work ceases for the day, we can shut the pump off. If you get some water in that area, we'll not require you to have it on during nighttime hours.
We're not anticipating that.
It's gathering. Engine drive, driven pump most likely?
It'll most likely be just a trash pump connected to a generator.
If I may.
Just...
Again, my name's John Milligan. I'm the property manager for Heritage Hills Society. I was just going to expand a little bit on the question related to the, the structural integrity of the rest of the culvert. We had engineers from Contech. They were actually the manufacturer of the culvert originally. Several of us, including Eric from Insight, walked the length of the culvert inside, and at least based on that visual inspection, it doesn't seem to have any issues with the structural integrity of the rest of the culvert. It's important to realize that what has happened is not really a consequence of corrosion. It's really a consequence of erosion, if, if that's a more accurate terminology. So there's no corrosion visible in the rest of the culvert. It's just a, sort of a confluence of erosion from the stream bed up and from the curb cuts down that's led to the displacement of the paddles that we're going to replace.
So the question I, I've got is, and if the underlying causes the flow of water, so if one of the underlying causes is the flow of water, and then how it enters the curb cut, that curb cut remains?
The curb cuts remain, but as opposed to being soil, we're going to stabilize them with rip rap to create a safer conveyance down. And actually, not only is it going to stabilize with rip rap, but we're going to create a cutoff swell to actually prevent it from even entering the inlet of the culvert. We're going to take a swell. Here's your curb cuts. This swell is going to convey the water all the way back to this point.
So just, I'd like to back up. What was the original design intention of the curb cuts that put them there in the first place?
To let the water just flow down the slope and into the stream.
So that was originally the plan?
As far, I haven't gone back and done a record search, but that's how it's been, as far as I know. There's, there's a couple of other points before we end. I just want to bring the board's...
Basically, we just sort of have a low point in the road at that location. Basically, accumulate a two or three-inch-deep puddle there. There's no velocity. It just sort of lets that puddle drain off into that area above the culvert. You're going to, they're going to redirect that flow now with this new design. It's just intended to remove the water that accumulates in that area. The grades don't really lend itself to a catch basin and tying it into another catch basin. Could also be soil settlement over the last 30 years.
Yeah. Just a couple of other points. Joe, basically, we've walked through where the project is and what we're doing. Your board isn't the only board that's going to issue a permit on this.
Right.
We already have a DEC freshwater wetland permit for this work, and the other entity that'll have jurisdiction is the Army Corps of Engineers.
Right.
Their process is a two-step process. We have already reached out to them. They have confirmed that we qualify under what's known as the Nationwide III. That's their permit. And the way it works is, we submit our pre-application. It goes out to a 30-day comment period, which we're currently in. We've already made that submission. At the end of 30 days, a 45-day clock starts, where the Army Corps can object and ask for additional information. Or if they don't offer any comments, after 45 days, the permit is issued. We're not expecting any objections from Army Corps, so basically, we're sitting and waiting for the time clock to expire.
Joe, one of, one of my questions was on the DEC's permit. It references the plans as we have them here, February 15, and it says, you know, that's the, it seems to say that's the, the plan that you shall comply with. And then later on, it does reference that it could be amended by the department, but we're not the department. So how do you reckon with the DEC having signed off on these plans, you're giving the applicant direction that could result in amendment of the plan?
And likely will.
Yeah, absolutely. So how does that work together on a procedural level?
Well, I would presume that at the time, the DEC is ready to issue their permit, that Rich will update them to the current set of plans to make sure that it's not issued. Slight amount of, we already have our permit. That's right. I'm sorry. So here's, so this. No, so here's, so what will happen is if these plans change, they're going to have to go back and get an amendment. Right. So as we wind down our process with you, which we have a comfort level as to when we're getting near the end of the comments, working with Joe's office, we do it regularly. We'll submit that set to DEC simultaneously and say, we've been working with the town on the local wetland permit. These have been the latest amendments. Can we amend our permit to this latest set? Here's the changes. We're used to juggling between agencies. It happens regularly. So we're always playing chicken and egg. In the end, the permit will be issued for our plans.
Okay. I just want to make sure for the record that's, thank you.
Some things procedurally. We believe this to be a type-two action. That's something I just want to confirm with the board because that would make us exempt from seeker and we wouldn't need to take any further action. And then our next step, depending on comfort level, is to schedule a public hearing.
Do you want to make some comments either or Serret?
So, well, this is, you're on this one, right? Yeah. So my concerns on this, we have, we've had a memo. We've issued that memo. There's some concerns around the stability, the side slopes, the one and a half on one slopes, the size.
They're graded at two on one. So it's just changing the detail.
Okay. And, you know, I want to verify the riprap sizing. I've got, have some, there seems to be some discrepancies on the plans where in one instance, we're talking about those three-foot boulders protecting the footing. It's not shown on the other side. I was just curious, that was curious to me. Why are we showing the boulders on one side and not the others? Is there something special about that side or?
Yes. It has to do with the fact that this culvert doesn't line directly up with the stream flow. So we want to armor the side that's going to be most impacted by the flow lines. Whereas this is on the inside of the bend and is, overall is protected.
So that, you know, we're going to have to look at that item to make sure that the scour is going to be, you know, ultimately, that footing will ultimately be protected, not only on that side, but the other side as well. I've got traffic, obviously, is something that we're going to have to keep an eye on here. I want to understand what are going to be the disruptions and how we're going to manage traffic. I also, there's a series of items, you know, construction sequencing, where are we staging? Where's materials going? I think that's all important because we're really, let's write on the threshold of our limited disturbance. And I want to make sure we get all those items covered. My sense is, we only have 100 square feet to play with. My sense is we're going to be over that. But we'll see, we'll see how that goes. And that would be, my final item was going to be around the limited disturbance. I would say the bigger items. You know, some crafty lines drawn there. And I think we're going to have to make sure that we're comfortable with that. That is the true limited disturbance. And obviously, we have some other detailed comments, but those were the bigger comments.
Yeah, well, I saw that, that it triggered, that it could go over the 5,000 square feet.
Right.
Yeah. Which made me think of something else. And that now that you're here, we, as a town, I've said this earlier, we benefit as a town from what is going on here. And is this a B stream? What is this? An A? It's a perennial freshwater stream. What level is it? Do you know?
I don't know what hand.
Yeah.
Three?
It's, yeah, it's A, B, or C. So I'd have to check. It's called C.
Class C trout screen.
Yes. Well, that's the trout end is what I.
With no trout.
As far as you know. There are trout in the Brown Brook, which is where it goes into, which makes it pretty important. I have concerns and that it has to do with the town board. And that I really think that whatever could be done by the town board to apply for federal revenue sharing funds, using an old-fashioned term, because we benefit, anything they do in Heritage, up on those hills, we benefit in this broadly in the town. And federal revenue sharing are tax monies that come from everybody. And I think it's in order that applications be made that could be applied to the society.
See, the challenge with that, and I'll just share with you, here's the challenge. On private, it's going to be difficult to get public funding applied to private lands. I understand your comments about the benefits of the town, but ultimately, it's private lands.
But what they're doing is.
That doesn't mean that I don't think there aren't opportunities for sharing, you know.
We did Chenarock using that.
But we own Lake Chenarock. We own the lake. And at the time, that was in transition. And we're going to be doing it right now. We're applying for one for Lincolndale.
There's got to be something.
So, but let me, so, so what I was thinking was, not federal, but there are opportunities for us to look at this project and understand whether there's potential for phosphorus reductions that maybe we could approach the EOH. I know the EOH is not spending as much money in the watershed right now, excuse me, in the non-FAD basins right now as they have. But I was even thinking about this project and we were talking about the in last night. I didn't put it in my memo, but there's a pretty decent opportunity to do a phosphorus retrofit project as part of this, especially using that bypass well where you're picking up. And I'm sure that the applicant wouldn't want to voluntarily go down that road if, you know, but if maybe there was revenue sharing through the EOH, they might be willing to. And I can enter into those conversations, but it really starts with is the applicant interested in participating in that.
So let's start with time.
This is what I thought. I thought it was going to be a timing issue.
Ultimately, everything comes down to time. We're in May 8th as of today. The ideal time to do this work is in the summer. I need to secure an approval from this board, which, let's put the most aggressive schedule to it we can. I come back next meeting for a public hearing and a resolution. That would be June. And that, that's up to you guys, but that would be the most aggressive that we could do it. We have to coordinate with DEC at that point. We have to line up the contractor. We have to make sure that we, you know, we submit site plans for signature, which will take a week or two. So, you know, as of right now, our most aggressive schedule is starting us June, July, which puts us right in the middle of summer. The longer we wait, any other things that we add in, while, yeah, they might benefit us in other ways, would cost us in time. And I'd have to talk to the society about that.
Where does that stream ultimately end up in a wetland area? It's obviously south of that.
Yeah.
And then does that flow into any other body of water that's accessible to town residents or?
It's, it's basically, isn't it the same stream that ultimately flows through Fireman's Field?
Goes into Fireman's Field.
Basically, ultimately, the one that goes through Fireman's Field.
And then it's going to go behind Bonnie Yellows.
Correct.
Which is the largest?
You know, which is, you know, I didn't specifically comment on sediment control during construction, but obviously, that's the most important. But I think they have, I think they have a solid plan for that. I mean, we got to keep an eye on that during construction. But that's obviously an item we have to keep a very close eye on during construction.
Some of the, some of the things that we went through were that plan. We also talked a little bit about construction and what our plan is. The main recreation facility is just north of us. Workers are going to park there. No machines will be located within the stream. The only excavator is going to be sighted. Is going to be sighted adjacent to the roadway. We will have trucks temporarily staged for material delivery such as riprap or the stone. That's not uncommon in Heritage Hills. I mean, there's maintenance forever going on between catch basin masons, pipe replacements, and pavement. So it's something, you know, the residents are used to, we believe. This is a three-way stop, which helps control the traffic. And then we'll have workers there as well.
Is the dirt bag that you described an ongoing sediment catching condition? Or is that just for the?
It is a temporary condition for construction.
During construction.
To control if we have to do any de-watering in this area as opposed to us just putting a trash pump in, which would suck the silt and sediment. It's to control that.
So that's just temporary. And then the debris you take out, what do you do with it?
It would need to get, usually what they'll do is they'll, they'll break the bag and then take whatever sediment. And our intent would be to relocate it in this area. Our goal is not to import fill, but to use whatever material we have.
I just think we got to be careful. We got to, we're going to have to make sure that the quality of that fill isn't highly erodible, obviously.
Yep.
And if it is, we just got to make sure it's at depth. But, I mean, told you comment, your question about potential funding. There would be an opportunity here, given the impervious surface. The timing, this would not require us to apply for a grant. That would further benefit the town, but it would provide some money. But you're going to have, if you talk to the society about that, it might add a month to your schedule.
Well, I also meant it for future projects that they have, because anything on that hill that they improve, we benefit.
I mean, in all honesty, I don't know what capacity Rich, you're working for the society, but if there is a willingness on their part, we, you and I could do a site walk and maybe they can identify some areas and we can look for opportunities to do other retrofit projects. And we can partner with Heritage to approach the EOH. Like I said, I know there's, right now, the funding, the money being spent outside of the FAD basins, which we're in, has been kind of throttled back a little bit.
And they have a head of a stormwater committee. I'd have to talk to them.
Yeah, that's his dad, by the way.
No, that's for the, for the society is.
Oh, for the societies. Bruce, I thought you were talking about for the EOH.
I excuse myself. I don't want to talk about this project, but I just want to ask you a question. Would, if society, which is obviously going to pay for this project at a significant cost, could they be, can funding come after the fact?
So let's, yes, the answer to that question is yes. And, but it depends on whether this project would be able to account for any phosphorus loading. What I was talking about was potentially modifying this project in a way that we could put some elements in, meaning the water that we were going to pick up in that swell is probably a treatable, is, once we collected it, it's treatable, right? So I was thinking, talking really about a modification to this plan to make sure we're getting phosphorus. But as far as this plan goes, there may still be opportunity because of the bank erosion. I would just, I hadn't looked at it from that perspective. Is there any opportunity to get? Very small? So for this project, we might not be able, because if we were able to get phosphorus, then we can get money, about 40,000, you know, a kilogram for phosphorus. But this project as conceived, it doesn't seem like it has that.
Well, so the whole of the West Hill, the other side of the West Hill, its terminal point is Warren Street, which is not heritage property. There's a drain there.
No, it's only part of the West Hill. The rest of the West Hill goes down into.
Brown Brook.
Goes down into, yeah, down to the other side of the hill.
I'm just saying, but that one portion of it, the huge slope comes down. I don't know if there's, if there's anything there at that drainage point.
I know that.
Just because it comes into that public road.
I don't know what's going on with the road that was in the back, that maintenance. I mean, there's definitely opportunity in that maintenance area to do something for stormwater. I just, there would have to be some willingness. I don't know what all the property bounds are. I haven't looked at it from that. But if the society wanted to do something like that, we could identify a project like that and we can talk to the EOH about its fundability. And depending upon the amount of phosphorus that we would get, there could be money going into something like that.
I just want to alert, anything that's done in Heritage Hills, we benefit.
Right. From a storm, from many perspectives, but absolutely from a stormwater perspective.
From the stormwater. And that's my point.
What is the projects that the state gets involved in? Like up at where we have our watershed, they gave tax credit to the owners of the property. Where there is poison on the property.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
And they wanted to protect, they wanted to protect the watershed.
Correct.
And so they allowed the owners of the property to put in for tax relief and funding.
Correct.
Could we do that with a project like this?
No, those, that program is set up, it's called, it's a Brownfields program. So the money came through the Brownfields program. It was associated with the cleanup of the contamination, not the protection of the reservoir. So that program of tax relief is for private developers taking on liability from past landowners and agreeing to clean it up. And if a developer does that, the tax, the state will allow them to deduct that investment as tax, you know, in their tax scenario.
Would the society fall under that category as private developer?
Is this contaminated?
Oh, they're not cleaning up any contamination. There's no contamination.
It's not a contaminated site, luckily, because the numbers would be way bigger.
We don't pay taxes anyway, so there is no tax incentive for the HOA.
You know, but I think in this, I mean, for this, we can expedite, we can move as quickly, forward as quickly as we can and help get them on schedule. As far as money, it's, we'll look in the future for other opportunities to do that.
Board members, okay with scheduling a public hearing at our next, at our June meeting? And are you okay? Okay. Yes? Yes? Okay.
Is it premature to go to a resolution in the event we can address these comments?
Oh, we could do that. We could probably have a resolution ready. Yeah. I mean, I would want to make sure that our offices are working closely because this is pretty critical to make sure we get right, that we're on the same page and let's get all the brains thinking about it. And, but I, we can move forward with the preparation of a resolution for this board's potential action on after the public hearing, depending upon input or status of the plan, so.
Okay. Do you need a motion for us to direct you, direct you to prepare a resolution?
We don't normally do that, right?
No, but we need the resolution to set a public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
You need, you need a vote to set.
Oh, yes. Make a motion that we schedule a public hearing at our next meeting in June?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Before we adjourn, prior to the meeting, Bruce had brought up some interesting comments and some discussion. It's early. Could spend a few minutes just talking about your concerns and good points.
Yeah, I have some serious concerns with regard to development projects in the town of Somers. And that when possible, I think the planning board with its expertise and its related consultants be involved as much as possible within making those decisions. I know there are certain situations where the town, the town board has to, because of codes and bylaws or whatever, that they, that they have to be the lead agency. But I think it's important that the planning board consider that or make the, make the motion or get the desire for being as included as possible on all the major developments in this town. Not just, not just small developments, but the major developments that take place. And that's basically what I was.
So, so just, are you, are you referring, when you say developments, it makes me think of private sector activity in town. Are you talking about all construction projects? Like, for example, the town is going to be pursuing the construction of sewers in Lincolndale and Chenarock, right? Is that the kind of projects you're referring to? Or are you referring to the?
No, I'm referring to more like the De Chico's development, the Bonnie Yello development, the potential for the academy up in, up in, on the IBM site. I know that because of the zoning changes, that the lead agency has to be, technically has to be the town board. But I think that we need to be right behind the town board with regard to the expertise on deciding what is a viable project and how it should work. I think we have the.
No, I agree with you on the expertise. There's a lot of those projects you mentioned, this board is having a role. So I think that.
No, I'm not talking, I'm not saying we've been eliminated. I'm just saying, there are certain projects that we've had less input. I know I'm, I know I'm new on the board, but there are certain projects we've been, had less input or our input, our input has come by the request of the town board. I would like.
And there's also many instances, right, similar, like the project, the Chico's Bonnie Yello project that's going on, which is the town board is lead agency by going through seeker and granting approvals. This board still issues a site plan, but it's on how we're doing the site and the plan, not if we're doing the site plan.
Right.
Right? And so, so is your comment more, you want to, that have this board have as much input as possible in the if scenario, not the how scenario? I mean, you're always going to have it on the how scenario.
Right, right.
You're talking more on the if scenario.
I think somebody mentioned the word "shall" before with regard to a certain segment of the zoning code or something. I think we should have more "shall's" in here than, than, well, you know, what is the town, what's the town planning board think about this? Okay? It shouldn't be at the, our involvement should not be at the discretion of whether the town board wants us to make a comment or not. We should be involved. Sorry.
So what would prevent us from, in that instance where, and I'll use the term jurisdictional, is handed over to the town board to move the project forward and to take public comment and take hearings? Why couldn't we then operate as a committee, like some of the other committees in the town, have a representative at the town boards to take in the information that's being shared, so that we can get it back to the board, right, be notified of when it's on the town board agenda, so that we can stay informed in this? I think that's what you're alluding to, that we're not, we are not always up to date on the, on the progress.
I was trying to get a sense of what the, that clarifies it.
So, so, so now the, we transfer the, the secret responsibilities to the town board, and then it's off our agenda, we don't hear anything about it. But as board members and town residents, we still have an interest in it, and would like to be able to afford information maybe, and, you know, expertise, like you said.
And you may not see it show up on the town board agenda, so you may not know it's there, so you don't know to watch the TV or the video.
So, so to open a, a channel of communication, and my, my previous time on committees, I felt like that happened a lot, where, where there was an issue with communicating between boards and committees. And we all have a common goal here, and in this case, we want to ensure that the, the developments and the projects benefit as many people as possible, and they're handled under the auspices of the laws. And we should know, we should be at least briefed, or have someone at a town meeting, or another board meeting where it's been transferred, so we can follow through the project. Especially if it started here, and now it's been transferred over.
I think, I mean, what you're suggesting is, is obviously good government, right? Is that everybody, all, all the brains in the government are working together for the betterment of that, of that entity, right? So, so I'm not at every one of those decisions, and neither is Sherret, so I'm, I'm wondering if the board shouldn't, in, in certain way, maybe on specific applications, may, maybe there's a protocol that we can...
Yeah, I have a suggestion.
I'm just getting a sense, because Sherret, what you're saying makes a lot of sense, but I may not have the ability.
I have a suggestion.
You don't have the, you don't have the infrastructure concept.
That I think will help.
Right.
Bruce, as a new member, learned that under certain circumstances, the town board has to be the lead agency.
Right.
If there's a...
Zoning change.
Change in the zoning, they've got to be. I would agree with him privately, more privately, that at times I'm critical of what the town board didn't do when they were the lead agency, or did things and we didn't know anything about it. And especially having to do with Gus Boniello's project. I actually am puzzled, when the town board declares itself a lead agency, a letter goes to all the agencies, so they know. And they must respond and say, okay, we know, town board, you're the lead agency. And some of those agencies will remind the town board, hey, listen, don't forget this, and don't forget that, you know, and that's appreciated. I'm puzzled, as an example, why the town board on May 2nd declared itself the lead agency on creating the sewers for Lincolndale. I didn't get a letter. I'm an interested agency, I, I think the planning board should have received the letter just like all the other agencies get a letter. I'm just using that as an example, I, I just don't understand why we don't get a letter like everybody else. It's just assumed because we get a copy and, you follow what I'm saying?
I'd have to look...
I don't mean that as a criticism.
No, no, but I'd have to look at the distribution list.
Yeah, but we didn't get a letter.
I'm fairly certain the planning board was on there, but what hap...
I got this.
Is the planning board on there?
No, it isn't on there.
Give me the list.
It's in my folder, this...
Give me, give me that, please, Nancy.
There should be a letter on it.
No, no.
For, for the planning board to respond, so that we acknowledge...
No.
At a meeting.
No, give me that. The only people that get the cover letter are the involved agencies. Those agencies that are required to issue a permit.
Oh, 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 but I always wondered...
But you are listed here, wait.
Yeah, okay.
You are listed here, I'm sure, as an interested agency.
Yeah.
So you are informed.
But I think it should...
You can do whatever you want with that, that informed status.
So we can collectively respond, because what I'm reminded of is when the school...
Here you are, one, two, three, Somers Town Planning Board.
Okay, well, there was no letter on the top, that's what threw me, you know. And it's not on our agenda, and I think that we should acknowledge...
Well, that's a separate issue.
And that possibly come up with something of value.
That's a separate issue.
To the lead agency.
If you would like on items for which you are an interested agency...
Anything, yeah.
For them to show up.
I have a case in point, it's the school. The school.
The academy.
The academy.
There you're an involved agency.
And we, it should have been on our agenda, and some of us could have contributed things that we know that the town board wasn't aware of.
Wait, you were invited, excuse me, the town, there were meetings way up front.
Yes, I remember that, yes.
That the planning board was invited...
Yes, we were.
...to come to, and contributed to all of the issues, so that happened way up front.
I agree, I agree. I just meant the, the formal part, it doesn't exist.
So, so, so this is a question of format, being the newest member on the board. I have, I have several memos from other boards and committees regarding projects that we're responsible for, where questions are asked and clarifications are requested, which tells me that they're discussing these things, right? Assumably because that project was on their agenda to be discussed. To sort of tag along with what you had said, could we establish that once jurisdiction has been transferred to another board or agency, that when those decisions come up, we can discuss it as a board, or is that not fall under the purview of the planning board to do? And give a recommendation, just like I have from the Architectural Review Board, and I have from the Open Space Committee?
Those are minutes.
No, they're not, they're...
Oh, you meant, you meant they're memo.
Yeah, they're memos.
So, Chris, the thing, like, so when you get a memo from Open Space, this board is referring those projects to Open Space, so the mechanism, that's the mechanism that triggers it being on that agenda.
Right.
Right, when the town board refers something to this board, it automatically shows up on the agenda. What's not happening is, when this board is an interested or involved agency in another agency's approval, should we be carrying some, you know, at the end of the agenda, just, hey, let's just check in on all these things? That could be a process improvement.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
We could add them as items for discussion, we can certainly do that. And the code identifies very specifically some of the referrals of, the applications that come into my office. I'm the one responsible for saying where they go, and who gets them. Some of that is defined, it's not my decision, some of it is defined by the code. Some of the categories and some of the zones, et cetera, define that things have to go, particularly to the Open Space Committee. So, you know, they get certain things, and then I decide, do the police department care? You, you have to understand that at the beginning, I sent them every place. People didn't want them because they didn't feel they had anything to offer, and didn't want to ask for all this paper. So we've, you know, now made it to the more essential referring agencies. And again, when it's a town board referral, it's up to, when it goes to the town board on a lot of these things, they're required, like on a zone change, they're required to refer it to you. The town board is required to ask for your opinion on a zone change. So you get it, you have to get it.
And sometimes we may be silent, and sometimes we ask them a question, and they're silent. So the dialogue is not always a discussion or input, sometimes it's assessed by not responding or, or having a conflicting, expressing a conflicting opinion. Another thing, you're, you're mentioning comments we receive from other boards. Often what will happen is, when an application comes up, chair will say, we've received since the last meeting this input, and just give a, a general gloss on what it is without reading a verbatim, that acknowledges it for the record as well. So to that board, looking at our minutes or seeing our meeting, can see that, yes, the planning board has received it, has taken it into consideration as part of it, that it's not just a piece of paper that's going and flying, hither and yon. So we do try to track it and memorialize the fact that it's been received as well.
Okay.
As part of the...
Thank you.
But I, I'm not putting words in Bruce's mouth, but I think what startled us is, I think he, and I, and I think the rest of the board feels the same way, I think we'd like to have more input at the beginning of the, of the project, even if we're not the lead agency, at least maybe something in writing. And of course, in, in order to do that, we're going to have to be privy to all the information that's been received from the applicant.
Well, I mean, I have to say this because I don't know that we can do this, but, you know, I don't know, I'm not totally familiar with all of the town's systems, right? But there are, I mean, in 2019, there's technology that can make that pretty easy.
Yeah.
You know, in private sector, I, I mean, we'll, I would say, set up a Teams page and just put all the documents on, and everybody can go on and comment, and, and, you know, it's a great way to collaborate. I just don't know what the town's systems are, but I'm sure there are systems that might make that easy. And then there's, of course, the old school way of just, you know, picking up the phone or sending, and, and it seems like we might have to rely on that.
The only caveat I would, because we don't have counsel here, is that I, I would be concerned about some kind of a central mechanism where there were comments shared among people from boards, because you can't have all blind discussions.
Right.
So, exactly.
Yes.
So I think maybe subscribing to the, like, you subscribe to the planning board, and you can get, you know, announcement of the meetings, et cetera. You could subscribe to a release of, here the doc, you can, you can get the agenda with the appended documentation for the meeting, that could do it. But what you're describing, like a SharePoint type of a thing, where people would all be signing on, I'd be really concerned about the legal implications.
We've already been warned about being sued by a lawyer who appears here very often.
In my mind, I'm thinking it's an individual conversation, individual input that, but you're right, it's not public, so...
Yeah.
In a private workspace, it would make sense, but in this forum, no. Even I, I pretend like I'm not a government agent.
But it could, it could still be handled at a meeting in public forum, and, and seven opinions.
Maybe, maybe the way to trigger this, I don't know, is...
If there's an op, if there's something that the town board is looking at, that this board wants, I mean, I'm thinking about how do we end this conversation, right? Is it a blanket statement to the town board that this board is going to, or is it a future process of if there's an agenda on the town board that this board is interested in, that then at that point, this board might trigger, hey, we would like to get more involved, you know, in, in a proactive way? I, I think process-wise, it might make sense to talk about...
I'll give you an example. When Gus Boniello, the crossing, we started on that, I think it's almost five years ago. When did you come, was it five years ago?
Somers Crossing.
Yeah.
Six years ago.
So, okay, six years ago, we started on the Somers Crossing, because it was, it kind of coincided with, with the Sherret's arrival. That's how long ago we had our first joint meeting with the town board, as, they were the lead agency, and we were trying to iron out...
Seeker.
Seeker, and, and it was rough, but it was good, it was a joint work session. Well, zoom forward approximately three years, three and a half years into the project, and Gus had sold off the store, because everything had been approved, and the Chicos now owned the store, and there was a meeting, and we were caught flat-footed. We had no idea that the town board, as a lead agency, had entered into an agreement with Gus, therefore with the Chicos, that the Chicos was not going to get a CO until they built all the sidewalks up to the schools. Well, number one, we didn't know there were going to be sidewalks. Number two, we didn't know there was an agreement, and number three, we learned that we had to work out the plan for the sidewalks that we weren't part of. Well, had we been included as planners, we could have told them from the beginning where you could do sidewalks, where you couldn't do sidewalks, and there was going to be a problem over the Brown Brook. And that's what Sherret ran into, it took them forever to finally iron it all out, and that could have all been avoided if we had been included on what the town board wanted. As planners, we were aware of the problems, if you're going to have sidewalks.
Well, I, I think...
Exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, no, I get that, but...
We lost, our time on that did not have to happen that way.
I don't think that the issue with the Brown Brook has anything to do with inter-agency coordination. That was a well-known item early on.
I'm sorry, that's a toughie, but it would have been known, and also, where are you going to do it now?
I'm just saying, as the person who brought that up, that was well-known very early on, not necessarily by this board, by the applicant, prior, even, and this board made it a, this board made it a contingency on, on its approval. Now, the layout, I agree with everything you just said, the town board did negotiate the layouts, you know, in, in a separate, in a separate item. Separate discussion.
I, I, I think one way that we can maybe table this, and put in a temporary or potential solution, is just to be notified when the town board has on their agenda, so that, for the time being, one of us, or all of us, can go as a town resident, and hear what's being discussed about a project that was either, again, transferred from, from our initial, you know, phase, or was a zoning change or something like that, so that we can just stay abreast on it, and that would be our choice to do. I, I don't think you can legislate and say that we have to begin this process, but I think that if we're, as a courtesy, we're notified that this is hitting the town board agenda, and, and I try to review that as often as I can, but we, sometimes you can't. If it's in my inbox, I'm going to see it, right? And then, and then, and we know now that this is going to be discussed, or open for public hearing, then we, we can attend. I mean, I don't think there would be any issue with format on that.
I think, I think, but Sherret, do you have, how would, I mean, you, do you have the mechanism to coordinate that inside the townhouse? I would imagine you do, but it's going to fall on you, so I don't want to volunteer any of this, Sherret.
Two, two things happen, one is, I get the agenda for the town board, I read it, and I say, oh, they're going to do those things, I better do the things I have to do on that, because I learn, sometimes a little late in the game, what's going on, and that there are things the town board needs from me. I can coordinate, I mean, it's really, you know, we're not a big agency here. I can ask the supervisor's person, Kim, to kind of keep me informed. I tell her the things that I need about a week before, that have to go on the agenda. She needs to know the things that I need to go on the town board agenda. So obviously, other people need to be telling her that about a week in advance. So I can talk with her and ask her to start informing me about things that may be on the agenda, that may be of interest to all of you, and therefore, it would be up to our office, not just me, but Barbara, to get that information out to you. I mean, we, this is not real esoteric, it's a me meal.
No, no, but I, I think, I think, to put, to put a cap on this whole discussion, because we can go on forever, is the idea, we, we've established that there's some, there's cracks in this, in the process, and things fall through the cracks. What I would like to recommend, I don't know if it's doable, because I don't know the whole workings of this town's system, but I think we should be trying to set up some kind of a committee that would look at, because we're not going to solve this right here, that, that, that we would have the Morrissey's office, maybe some other different offices, to come up with a basic infrastructure system, which would then be the, the main mechanism for all this intercommunications. And, you know, that, that needs to be done in a more professional way than we can do it at this table. And, and I think, you know, it may, it might take some meetings with people from different agencies to talk about how, how we set up a structure, and then, once the structure is established, then this communication could, could, could link into it much more easily. And as, as Sherret said, you know, this is, you know, this is, this is not the United States government here.
Right.
Where we should be able...
It's a hundred-foot walk between twelve...
Yeah, yeah, we should be able to figure this out.
I mean, unless you're trying, unless your goal is to get the information in advance to the publication of the agenda, I would think that if you have the agenda packet, so to speak, the agenda that has the appended information that's being included now under the open meetings law, all that good stuff, that, I mean, as a researcher, as a land use law researcher, you know, we would go to municipalities' websites to get that, to get a sense of what is going on. That's going to be the best, richest immediate data for it. Looking at our schedule, the meeting, the work session meeting will have always preceded our meeting if there was something really of note, maybe someone could advise us of a decision that happened at the work session, but the next town meeting would be tomorrow, correct? Because their work session, we get ahead of us, and then they're the next day after this. So we've also got to always sort of think about how we sing... So we've also got to always sort of think about how we sync up with them. So if it was a really rich discussion we needed to know about, maybe Serret could fill us in, if she knew where she'd been at the, at the work session.
I don't go to the work sessions.
If you were called in for a star performance. But I, I would start with having, you know, either retrieving or getting a subscription to the release of the agenda with the...
Right, so, so maybe this board might want to, taking what I'm hearing, maybe you might want to, um, um, either formally write a letter to the town board requesting, it seems to be two things. One is a requesting that all work session agendas and open meeting agendas, so all town board meetings essentially, agendas once finalized be circulated to the planning board.
Directly.
Directly. Now, the materials, you might have to go to the town board, you might see something you're interested in, you might have to go to the website to go look at those. I don't think that they're going to...
Sometimes they're posted and sometimes they're not. I already use the site to get that information. It's there for you to get it.
So to me, it seems like that would...
Doesn't have to be circulated.
Item number one is for this board to request...
It's there publicly.
That all agendas be forwarded to this board, number one. And then maybe the second request, the...
All we have to do is sign up for it. I already get them.
Yeah.
It's free to everybody to do, and you'd get it automatically.
And then maybe the second request might come in the form of a request to have a coordination meeting between the town board to, in, you know, look for process improvements for inter-agency coordination. I mean, that, that's what I'm hearing, and if the board is on board, you might want to issue some kind of a memorandum in that sense to, to the town board, or just, you know, have chairman, just have a conversation with Rick about it.
In the future, any future lead agency project.
I think that's the key, right at the end there. Do you want, when you say, when, when Joe says that the planning board will write a memo, that means I'll write the memo for the planning board? So do you want me to write that memo or do you want John to have a face-to-face discussion with Rick about this? How do you want to do that? It's one or the other. What do you think is best?
I'll do whatever the board wants. I don't care.
Why don't you write a memo and he can carry it to Rick and it'll do, uh...
I can do, I can do that. I will pass it, as I often do, to the board, make, you know, get any, your comments. Do that. Do the, pass it and then John can follow up.
And I, I will meet with them too.